Okay. All right, we are live streaming on YouTube, I believe. Yes, live streaming on YouTube. Today is Tuesday, April 21st, 2020. So, Dr. Rothschild, you are here, correct?
Ah, yes, here.
Okay, Councilman Schuster, you are here.
Yes.
Councilman McAndrew.
Yes.
Councilman Donahue.
Yes.
Solicitor Hayes.
Here.
And we have our city clerk, Lori Reed. Lori, you're with us?
Yes.
And we have Kathy Carrera from our office as well. Kathy, can you hear us?
I believe. You did, Kathy.
Okay, we'll wait on her. Okay, so this is our caucus. Our regular meeting starts at 6:30. So just want to say I hope everybody's doing well, everybody's staying healthy. We don't have anything on the agenda tonight in terms of legislation. So we have nothing really to discuss there. I only have two things that I wanted to go over very briefly. First, we did receive four comments from the public. So I will announce this in fourth order and ask somebody to make a motion. So we had comments from Fay Frannis, Norma Jeffries, Marie Schumacher, and Tom Edwards. So everyone has received and reviewed those comments. So we'll make a motion to put those into the official record and into our minutes. The other thing I wanted to mention is that we did receive an update from Art Moretti, who is the gentleman who's doing the Gas Card Audit. So he emailed Mrs. Reed today in response to my request, just for a general update. He did say that the report is going to be complete by Friday of this week, hopefully. It's going through, it's in draft form now, it's going through a review process. So if we do receive that by Friday, I just wanted to run this by all of you. I would like to invite Mr. Moretti in. Two o'clock is preferably next Tuesday, if we get the report by Friday and have enough time to review it. But I'd like to invite him in for a caucus Tuesday so that he can present the report to us and then answer any questions that we may have. So is everybody okay with that?
Yes.
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 Okay, great. Okay. So that should be interesting, just to see, you know, what his report says. And obviously, you know, hopefully you all will have a chance to review it and come with any, prepared with any questions on Tuesday. Also, one of the issues that has come up, that Solicitor Hayes has been working on to kind of maybe correct it, is any mayor, or future mayor, future administration, this administration, taking an unexpendable balance from a line item within our budget and increasing the salary of a position or adding a position outside of the budgetary process. So Solicitor Hayes did send out a draft copy of this ordinance. Kevin, do you want to speak to that for a second?
Sure. What the proposed amendment to the ordinance would do is, in the event that, in the event that there's an unexpected, unexpendable balance in an appropriated item, and the administration wishes to use that unexpendable balance to give a raise to a, to a position, or to create a position that's unidentified in the budget, then they would have to come to council for its prior approval before allocating, reallocating those funds. So in other words, if a line item within a budget is identified as having a certain salary, and the administration wishes to increase that salary during the course of the year, the budget year, because they have some money that has not been spent, they have to come to council first in order to effectuate that, that, that transfer of funds.
Thanks.
My understanding is the, you know, the, the, the purpose of this is to ensure that that if you're, if a, if, if there's a budget item for a certain salary, you hold that salary unless some circumstances arises that necessitates a transfer. Otherwise, not saying that anybody, any administration would do this, but it could be, any leftover funds could be reallocated towards a salary at the end of the year.
Yeah, and that, and thanks, Kevin. And that's the point, I think, that all of us, I think, have been making over the last couple of weeks is the fact that...
We'll give him a minute.
Okay. Everybody here, you know? I'm back. Oh, boy. Okay. The beauty of working from home here. So what I, what I was going to say was, before I freeze again, was I think the point that we were all making, all of us individually and collectively over the last few weeks, was that what we want to avoid is going through the whole budget process and council being involved in that process, the public, most importantly, being involved in that process. The public giving their input on the budget, what they like, what they don't like, what they think should be changed, what they think should stay the same. Council doing the same thing and, and taking part in our oversight role. What this legislation will hopefully do is to avoid any administration coming in for any reason and saying, we have an unexpendable balance. We want to, we don't think this salary is fair, we want to increase the salary, or we want to add a position, because then that takes us out of the whole process. And it diminishes our oversight role, and it, more importantly, diminishes the public's role as well, to have a say. Because if an administration were to raise the salary for whatever position, you take the public, and they do it outside of the budget, and council's not involved, you take the public out of that process. And I think that was a concern of all of us. So I think there may be some really minor changes here. I talked to Kevin a little bit about one of them today, but besides that, I'm okay with this. And if anyone else has anything that they would like to change on it, you know, if you want to get those recommendations to Kevin, and then hopefully we can get it on the agenda soon as possible.
Thank you for putting this together, Kevin.
Great work.
Anybody else have anything in terms of that? Okay. I don't have anything else. The only thing I did, just want to throw it to Lori. Lori, do you have anything, just in terms of anything that's going on?
No, Councilman Gohn, I don't have anything procedural to add for this evening. As you mentioned, we don't have any legislation tonight, just third order items. And I think that's all I have.
Okay, great. Thank you, Mrs. Reed. Kevin, do you have anything besides what we talked about with the ordinance?
Just briefly, the governor signed into law Senate Bill E41. It's now known as Act 15 of 2020, and it addresses a lot of the, the extreme circumstances that have arisen as a result of the COVID-19 virus and the pandemic. But one of the things that is really pertinent to us is that it codified really what we are doing in terms of our meeting, and that is permit it, it permits councils and other municipalities to have meetings through telecommunication devices such as Zoom. And it codifies that a physical quorum is not necessary. However, a quorum must be present through the telecommunication device. It also allows public participation to be limited to written, written comments as long as they are allowed to participate. And so that was, that was, it's important for us. I have a memo here that, which I'll circulate to you all after I review it. But that was a, so basically, what we're doing in terms of our meetings and the format that we're following is completely legal, and the governor and the Journal Assembly just further memorialize that.
Okay, great. And yeah, just, I mentioned this, I think, every week now. But what I have been doing in my review of the public comments is to go through them and any questions that, you know, council can answer, I certainly will give the answer at a council meeting, number one. Number two, most of the questions that we've gotten so far, as anyone from the public can see and looking at our minutes, are questions that I would be going to the administration with and asking for that information. For example, Mrs. Schumacher, I'll take one question out of what she had sent. Do street sweepers have odometers? And if they do, what is the reading on the two new street sweepers? So we would have to go to the administration to get that information. So what I've been doing is compiling these questions into a Word document. I've spoken to the mayor, I've sent the first round of questions to the mayor. She was going to disperse those to her department heads and then hope, and then get back to us with an answer. One of the realities of the situation that we find ourselves in is, obviously, it may take a little bit more time than any of us would like to get information back to the public in terms of some of these questions. So I just want to make that point clear. Second thing, again, I don't think anybody wants to be in this position of having kind of a meeting over Zoom. I'd much rather be in council chambers, and I'm hoping that maybe in the next, sometime in the next few months, we can, we can be back there. But we are doing the best we can under the circumstances. So thank you, Solicitor Hayes. Anybody have any comments on anything in general? I don't have anything else. I guess we'll start with Dr. Rothschild. Okay, sure.
Perfect. Yeah, so I just wanted to update everyone. I think you all received the invitation. On Friday, there was a call with SEIU and some workers from CHS, you know, who worked at Regional or Moses Taylor Hospitals in Scranton. And so I did join that, that call. And I can, you know, continue to update everyone on what's happening with that situation. But I know they're, they're trying to make sure that the healthcare workers are as safe as possible, as well as the patients. And I was not necessarily surprised by some of the things that I heard, but to hear it firsthand from, from the workers themselves, it's a bit disheartening to see what they're, what they're going through. I'm going through some similar things, but just the things that they're not being provided with, or how things are being handled at that health system has been disappointing for me. So yeah, if anyone has further questions on that, I'm happy to, to answer.
Okay, great. Thank you. Councilman Donahue, do you have anything for the good of the order?
Um, just, so I believe we're going to be getting legislation next week with an emergency declaration with refuse, sort of pushing back some of the deadlines. I also brought up with the administration trying to, you know, because if we get them out, when the bills will go out, it won't be till the first week in May. And that's if we, you know, approving it on an emergency basis next week. And so I had suggested maybe pushing the discount period back. And I'm more than willing to, you know, open up discussion, I guess, is what I'm trying to do on when we would like to push that back too. Usually in the past, we've given people at least six weeks with that discount period from when the bills have gone out. I think last year they got eight weeks. So I don't know if anyone has any opinions on that before we, so we could pass those on to the administration so that we can get the legislation for next week.
Okay, thank you.
And Councilman Donahue, I had a conversation this afternoon with the city solicitor, and we're going to work together on that legislation.
Okay, great. Councilman McAndrew, anything?
Yes, quickly, with regards to public comment, like you just stated that, and I think maybe Jeff can help us out with this, by maybe informing the public, helping us out, because not everybody watches Zoom meetings, that, you know, we're compiling the public comments concerns, questions. You're compiling them, you're passing on administration, we're awaiting responses. And when we get them, of course, we're going to provide them to the people that submitted the comments. Because I'm hearing a lot that, you know, you're not doing it this way, you're not doing it like the school board does, you're not allowing this, but we're doing it in our own fashion. I just want the public to know that we're addressing their concerns. There's a process in place, and we'll get back to them. Thanks.
Great. Thank you. Councilman Schuster, anything?
No, nothing at this time, just echoing what you guys have been saying about public comments.
Okay. All right. I don't have anything else. Like I said, the agenda is really light, we only have third order items. The only other thing I did want to mention, Bob Gatton's the chairperson for the Scranton Recreation Board had emailed me today a copy of their minutes from Thursday, March 7th. So we'll get those out, Lori, we'll get those out to everybody. And they'll be in our third order for next week, so that the public can take a look at them. And that's all I have. So if anybody has anything else, let me know. But if not, I think we can wait until 6:30 and two weeks, until our regular meeting. Okay? All right. So we will come back and we will have our regular meeting at 6:30. Thanks, everybody. Okay, everyone, we are going to get started. I'd like to welcome everyone to our Tuesday, April 21st, 2020, regularly scheduled Scranton City Council meeting. I'd like everyone at this time to please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. "I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please remain standing for a moment of silent reflection for our servicemen and women throughout the world, and also for those who have passed away in our community. As we have been the past few weeks, let us once again take a moment, a special moment of silence tonight for the people in our community and throughout the world who are suffering or who have passed away from the coronavirus. Let us think about them and their families at this time, that they may find peace. Let us think now about the doctors, nurses, researchers, and all medical professionals and first responders who seek to heal and help those affected, and who put themselves at risk in the process. May they find protection and peace. Whether we are home or abroad, surrounded by many people suffering from this illness or only a few, let us stick together, endure together, mourn together, persist and prepare together. In place of our anxiety, let us continue to hope and find peace, and we will get through this." Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mr. Schuster?
Present.
Mr. Schuster?
Present.
Mr. McAndrew?
Present.
Dr. Rothschild?
Here.
Mr. Donahue?
Here.
Mr. Go ahead.
Here, thank you, Ms. Carrera. Mrs. Reed, please dispense with the reading of the minutes.
Thank you. Third order, 3A, proclamation issued by Mayor Paige G. Cognetti dated April 14, 2020, extending the state of emergency in the city of Scranton. 3B, emergency declaration issued by Mayor Paige G. Cognetti dated April 15, 2020, extending the state of emergency to April 30, 2020. 3C, minutes of the non-uniform municipal pension board meeting held March 18, 2020. 3D, minutes of the composite pension board meeting held March 18, 2020. 3E, agenda for the non-uniform municipal pension board meeting held April 15, 2020. 3F, controllers' report for month ending March 31, 2020. 3G, breakdown of the eligible salaries for the liquid fuels account for the months of January, February, and March 2020. 3H, minutes of the Scranton Police Pension Commission public hearing held March 18, 2020. 3I, fuel card analysis received from Office of the City Controller dated March 23, 2020.
Thank you, Mrs. Reed. Are there any comments on any of the third order items at this time? Okay, if not received and filed. Do any council members have any announcements at this time?
Just one briefly, just my weekly reminder that if you haven't filled out your census information, to please do so, you could fill out that information online at my2020census.gov, and that's all I have.
Thank you. Anyone else have any announcements?
I have two, actually. So this Sunday, April 26th, from 1:00 to 5:00 p.m., the Scranton Dunmore Fraternal Order Police Lodge II and the Scranton Police Department will be hosting a free pasta dinner. This dinner is takeout only via drive-through, located at 401 Railroad Avenue in West Side. Please enter on Railroad Avenue side, limit of four dinners per vehicle. Great job, guys. Also, this week, actually tomorrow is National Secretaries Day, also referred to as National Administrative Professional Day. I would like to wish our very own Council Secretary Lori Reed a happy National Secretaries Day, and thank her for all the hard work she does for us. I would like to also wish all the secretary administrative professionals that are still working on the front lines during this pandemic, and I wish them the same. And especially the ones that were recently furloughed from the city. Please know that I appreciate all of you, and we'll be thinking about you all this week. Thank you, that's all I have.
Thank you. Anyone else have any other announcements? I have two quick ones. First, if there are any groups or organizations who are offering free services or assistance to someone in need during this national emergency, and you'd like to have that information available on ECTV, please email chris@ectv@gmail.com. The wording of your email is exactly what they will publish on Channel 19. Finally, if anyone would like to comment on any agenda items or city business, please send those comments in writing to our city clerk Lori Reed by emailing lreid@scrantonpa.gov. Council will continue to accept public comment until the day of our meeting, Tuesday at 4:30 p.m. Public comment is reviewed by the council prior to our meeting and is placed on the official record and in the minutes of our meetings. Council's agenda is being posted for public review the Friday before our Tuesday meeting. Our agenda and minutes can be accessed by going to www.scrantonpa.gov and clicking on the City Council page. And that's all I have. Mrs. Reed?
Fourth order, citizens' participation.
Thank you, Mrs. Reed. At this time, I'd ask if someone could please make a motion to accept public comment from the following individuals to be placed into the record and our official minutes of this meeting.
So moved.
Was there a second?
Second.
Okay. On the question? Okay, on the question, those individuals who have submitted public comment are Fay Frannis, Norma Jeffries, Marie Schumacher, and Tom Edwards. We did receive all of their comments this afternoon, earlier this morning and this afternoon. I have them right here with me. We have, I have reviewed all of the comments, and I know my council colleagues have as well. So what I am going to do again is to make sure that any of these questions that have been posed to council get to the proper department in the administration. And then we will, as soon as we get the answers to them, we will give those answers to members of the public. And these will be made part of our official minutes and part of the record. Anyone else on the question? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, the ayes have it, and so moved. Mrs. Reed?
Fifth order, 5A motions.
Councilman Schuster, do you have any motions or comments at this time?
Nothing at this time.
Thank you, Councilman Schuster. Councilman McAndrew, do you have any motions or comments at this time?
Not at this time, thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Rothschild, do you have any motions or comments at this time?
No, I don't. Thank you.
And Councilman Donahue, do you have any motions or comments at this time?
Just briefly, I just want to urge residents to continue to stay home, to practice social distancing, to only go out if you absolutely need to. I know we're all anxious to get back to normal, I know I am. But, you know, it's, it's not about, you know, whether, I know from my perspective, I had this conversation with Councilman Gohn this afternoon. The scariest part about this virus to me is that you could have it and not show symptoms. So whether or not, you know, you survive, you know, I might be able to survive it. You know, everyone else might be able to, on this, might be able to survive it. But, you know, we might be giving it to someone who can't. So I think we have to just continue to practice what we've been practicing. And I urge everyone to exert patience in that. I know it's not easy to do, but I think it needs to be done for betterment of everybody else. That's all I have.
Thank you, Councilman Donahue. I just have a few comments. First, council received an update from Art Moretti today on the Gas Card Audit Report. This is something that really has been evolving over the last few months. Mr. Moretti reported to council today that the draft report is complete and has been sent out for final review. Final review is a two-day process, which includes review of the schedules, work papers, and narratives. Should there be no significant issues, Mr. Moretti expects to release the report on Friday. Council had previously requested Mr. Moretti's participation in a future meeting once the report was received. So if council does receive that report Friday, I had asked in the caucus to have Mr. Moretti in to our caucus next Tuesday so that we can have him present that report and ask any questions. And certainly, if we receive it Friday, that will be placed in third order on our agenda, so the public can review that as well. So that's an update on the, on the gas card situation. The other thing that I just wanted to mention, for anyone in the public that has any questions at this time regarding city operations or the city's coronavirus response, anything really related to the coronavirus, you can send those requests and those questions to scranton311@scrantonpa.gov, or you can call 570-348-4101. The mayor and her administration have set up this system to field any sort of questions on any of the operations of the city at this time and our response to the coronavirus pandemic. Also, on the city's website, scrantonpa.gov, there are a number of lists of resources for people who are in need of food or shelter, help with their utilities, services for veterans, so on and so forth. So if, if you have access to a computer, please utilize the city's website. There are, is a ton of information on there. And if you don't have access to the computer, you can call, again, 570-348-4101. As Councilman Donahue mentioned, I just want to caution people, again, in the city, to please follow the guidelines set forth by our medical professionals here in the state. Governor Wolf has extended the shelter in place order until May 8th, which we all know. And we have to follow this for the safety of not only ourselves, but of everybody else. The news of the amount of deaths in the nursing homes is just, I can't even, there's, there are no words for it. And the heartache that goes along with that. So we need to, again, not only worry about ourselves, but worry about everybody else. I could not believe my eyes yesterday when I saw the utter selfishness and ignorance of people gathered in large crowds down in Harrisburg to protest Governor Wolf's orders. Every single one of us wants to get back to normal, and eventually we will. But for now, we have to stay home, we have to stay away from large crowds as much as we possibly can. For the most part, from what I've seen, the people of Scranton have done a relatively good job in listening to the guidelines and the shelter in place order. But we can't become complacent. And, you know, my concern is, and I talked to the mayor extensively about this, that, you know, on May 8th, everyone thinks that they can just go out and go back to normal. It's going to be a gradual process, hopefully. But this isn't a one-size-fits-all situation, and we can't treat it like that. So we need to continue to do our part. We need to continue to have hope as well, although that is difficult. There are a number of agencies, there are a number of people in our city that are out there willing to help you if you have mental health issues or if you're in need of food or shelter. Please call the number that I gave you before, or go to scrantonpa.gov, or send your questions or concerns to scranton311@scrantonpa.gov, and someone will put you in, in the right place. and someone will put you in, in the right place for that. Because, you know, I, I just went for a ride with my wife and kids just to get out of the house yesterday and you see people walking around and you wonder if they are in the same situation as I am where we can order food and have it delivered to our house. There's many people in our city who, who can't do that. There's many people in nursing homes who haven't seen their families. There's many elderly people who live by themselves. So we need to look out for each other during this crisis. And I think that we are, we're doing a good job with that. And I hope that we will continue to do that. And I'm confident that we will get through this.
I think they'll froze there for a minute, so we'll give them a minute to get back.
I froze it again. Yeah, I don't know where I left off.
It, it, it was, it was right at the end. If you want to.
Yeah, well, all I was saying is, yeah. Thank you. I, I was just saying that, you know, as long as we continue to do our part, I'm confident that we can get through this crisis. And before I freeze again, I'll, I'll shut up and we can move on. Mrs. Reed?
Thank you. Five B, no business at this time. Sixth order, six A, no business at this time. Seventh order, seven A, no business at this time.
Thank you, Mrs. Reed. If there is no further business, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn at this time?
Motion to adjourn.
This meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
Well, that, I think Kevin wants to.
Oh. Sorry, Kevin, you're, you're muted.
Did you announce the executive session?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. I had that written down here. Council did have an executive session. So we, council had an executive session at four thirty today for the purpose of obtaining updates from the city's labor solicitor on personnel matters and litigation. And now that I think of it too, Mrs. Reed, was it, this was advertised in the newspaper as well, correct?
Yes, it was in the Sunday edition of the Times.
Okay, all right. Okay, thank you. And thank you for reminding me, Kevin. I almost forgot that. Okay, if there's no further business, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
This meeting is adjourned. Stay safe, stay healthy. See everybody next week. Thank you.